All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January Plan Commission Meeting. I will call this meeting to order, it is seven PM on the dot and. Member DeBolt stepping back into the Secretary role here for us, thank you.
Shankle.
Present.
Manchester.
Present.
Bishop.
Present.
Frisbee filling for Holmes.
Present.
DeBolt, yes. Long or Delong. And Wortella.
And also Mr. Cox.
And Cox.
Had a conflict. So all of them excused.
All right, thank you, Member DeBolt. All right, this evening, we have our approval of our agenda for this evening. Any comments or questions, if not, I'll call for a motion to approve our agenda for tonight.
Member Manchester, I make a motion to approve the agenda as it's written.
Motion by Manchester.
Member Bishop, my second.
Support by Bishop, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, thank you. This time, we will open up for citizens' comments. Not see anyone joining us online, there's no one present. So we will move on to approval of minutes for the December meeting. Trust everyone has had a time to review those minutes. If you have any comments or questions, let us know, otherwise, we'll call for a motion to approve the December meeting minutes.
Member Manchester, I make a motion to approve the minutes as they are written.
Manchester motioned. I will support that. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, thank you. All right, we are on to Village Manager Report, Mr. Mallory.
Currently updating on the new village hall, the village council did unanimously support putting that out to bid. So Fredericks Construction has the responsibility where they'll be bidding it out. And we hope to receive at minimum three competitive bids on each of the subcontract work and be able to open those. It's the second Thursday. To have that information by the second meeting of the council in February, I don't have the date in front of me, but it's the third Monday to present staff's recommendation to move forward with that project or not. We believe if bids come under what the estimate is, we'll have cash in hand that we've saved over the last six years. So it wouldn't add any debt burden to the citizen and we'll move forward on that project. I'll pause there if there's questions to that project or process.
Is there an anticipated start date, did I miss that?
If it was approved to be for construction, I would hope it's the Tuesday after the council approves it.
The more realistic version than.
I've shared, I thought it was realistic. But we'll, I move in prior to the end of the calendar year, if it were to be approved, the third week of February would be the goal. So.
Calendar year.
This calendar year, yes.
And I may be aware of it, I probably forgot, the location?
Is just north of the water tower. So we own the property and a couple fiscal years ago, we tested the ground and did some prep work for that. So the entry exit point would be off Richardson. So we looked at it as a, an added improvement into that gateway into the city off Richardson. And then after it was constructed, we would tear down the existing village hall and the parking lot would be in back of the building.
Okay, yeah, that's a good location for us.
Yeah, one of the prior process was we, and this goes back probably to July, I think the presentation was and Frederick Construction took ninety days to evaluate all the property the village owned that would potentially be a location to build as well as a couple existing buildings in it that came back out of all the options as the, as the top option. And we have received our audit back and it's been appropriately filed with the state of Michigan. The public presentation, and this is for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, will be next Monday at six PM. Will be the public presentation on that, but we believe and in fact know that be pretty positive, the presentation when it's given, so, so, but I'll save those details for the council members to hear next Monday.
Any questions for the village manager, or his report?
If it's okay with you, can I just go through the DDA stuff and then we can turn it over to Kyle for the remaining three hours?
That sounds good.
Just seeing who is paying attention out there. Finances are fine, what we're gonna do in February is present through the second quarter because we have had, we'll have the exact cost, we are approved to spend up to thirty-five hundred dollars for the iceberg festival. And we'll have this fiscal year's exact cost, so we wanted to wait one month and, and present that, but everything's fine within DDA finances. If anyone saw over Christmas break, we were very fortunate. And were able to, on the first two DDA grant opportunities under the new program, we delivered the checks to both Jasper's and the Hideaway that had the work completed and, and all the paperwork in. We still have the other businesses that have been approved and some of that work has been scheduled to commence this spring and will get done before June and hopefully the rest as well. So we'll be able to go out some more of those grant opportunities for those businesses this spring. And then February eleventh, the chamber and the village have the iceberg festival coming up. So I have a meeting tomorrow, I think it's at eight-thirty, to continue those plans and, and get them honed in and and we're hoping that it is a very successful, family-oriented event in downtown Vicksburg. Just to bring exposure to downtown and, and our retail establishments and that, so our festivals are really have a positive impact on our, on our small businesses and we get a lot of very positive feedback from, from those family-owned establishments. Be happy to answer any questions.
Hearing no questions, we will go to the action items for tonight. Mr. Kyle Mucha here representing McKenna and Associates, presenting master plan update, so Kyle, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, if you guys want to first pull out the colored map we provided in the packets, I'd like to start there, which then I think will help further our discussion tonight. And I'll keep it to two hours and fifty-eight minutes tonight instead of three. So I think eighty percent of you were able to attend one of our public open houses we had in November and December. This existing future land, or existing conditions map, existing land uses was not presented at those public open houses. This is more a document that will go into the master plan as a, like a condition analysis, but also helps Planning Commission and the municipality board as well drive future decisions as we consider what the areas look like in ten to fifteen years. So I wanted to start with this to get your input. This is how I've classified some of the land uses throughout the village. First one being vacant undeveloped, which is that lighter shade yellow. Now, what I would classify this as is just, there's no activity on those sites, that's what I mean by vacant and undeveloped. It doesn't mean vacant as in there's no one living there, it just that there's no actual structures, buildings, any active use of those properties. And that will be significant as we look into like the future land using categories as well. So those, I think most of us are already aware of, considered along Twenty-Second Street over on the northeast portion of the village, near Sprinkle Road, and then a few other pockets too as we get south. And then a good chunk too over by the golf course as well. Commercial was a little bit more challenging because as we, all of us know in the village, there's many small homes in our downtown area and along Prairie Street that are either a home or a business. So I'm optimistic I caught most of them, but I welcome outside of tonight, other comments from the planning commission if we missed anything regarding commercial activities throughout Prairie Street. Health is that purple-ish color, that lavender in there, that would be primarily classified as like the bronze in sight. I believe we treated like a dental office differently than that, but the big chunk right here off of Boulevard is being classified as health.
Kyle, what is, what's the health thing right there by the golf course?
That might just be a.
Oh, it's a cemetery.
No, that down south in that green, looks almost like a lake, that might be what it is too. That. Dark blue?
Yeah.
Civic, so that's gonna be your golf course as well.
Okay.
Actually, no, the golf course might be Parks and Recreation, Civic is gonna be, we might have classified that as Angels.
Okay.
Education's on there, no big surprise, the Vicksburg Community School System takes up a good chunk. I believe we also classified Methodist Church as part of education as well because of the preschool that's located there. That can be reclassified if the planning commission decides a better category may fit, but that was my first inclination because they have the Heart and Hands Learning Center there and it operates as a educational institution. We get into the residential as well, in this regard, what we took initially first as just regular residential are those properties that don't have a, like a common sidewalk or might be unplatted, meaning they're not part of like the assessors plat of, you know, ABC Lane. It's more just a residential property itself. And then primarily our residential districts and uses within the village are considered neighborhood residential, which is that darker yellow. And those are the ones that have the sidewalk connectivity, those are ones that have probably uniform lot shapes as well. You know, sixty by a hundred in the L and Edwin neighborhoods or so, but those are more the, you know, square lots. Water features, Parks and Recreation, I think are all there, and then village limits on the outskirts as well. And we'll refine this a little bit more too, probably over the few, next few months, but as an analysis, I wanted to present this to the planning commission so as we work through our boards here, you guys can kind of see what the existing land conditions are and what the existing uses are within the village.
It looks like we don't have, though, we rezoned those three lots on Park and Main, that's the, to commercial. That's the funeral home, yeah. Right, so those should be rezoned.
I think that's all tied up in this conversation with Andrew Warren's group. So that might not have been sent to McKenna yet, that's probably beyond us.
Okay.
We're trying to get this back online and.
Is that probably, it's approved though, right?
It's approved, I just want you to make sure.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
No, and Rick, thank you, that's what I, I mean too, with like you guys, Jim. We, I can make a bigger poster for this too, but again, we have, you know, a few thousand parcels and to get every single thing and go through there, I mean, that could almost be a you know, a three or four day challenge itself, just sitting at a computer for eight hours and just plugging away, going through Google Street Views. And I know Jim, Jim would probably, you know, grind his teeth at me if I spent three days going through and making a map of that, so. So that's what the existing land use looks like for the village, obviously with a little few odds and ends in there too to classify. If it would be beneficial to the planning commission, we're happy to maybe do a zoom in of the downtown area, that'd make it a little bit easier to read as well as we move forward, but again, that's at your guys' discretion and direction, so I don't need to really respond now, but if there are maps that we work through in this process, you would like to see more aerial maps, more zoomed in sectional maps, we're happy to do that too, so. And again, I'm keeping in mind too that when we print this, the largest probably sheet size we'll have in this will be eleven by seventeen, so that's also why you gotta kind of smudge everything down for us, so.
So Kyle, when, when we look at this, this is, this is kind of, my mind is going to where are areas of opportunity, is that what this is kind of getting us to?
It helps that, Matt, it helps us understand what we have existing. So as we work through, like, what kind of housing do we want, what are other aspects or other things we want to aspire to in the village? It will be beneficial to tie it to this map to know what we have currently. So if we get residences say, hey, we need more housing, you can show, well, we have a ton of housing, where, where would you put it? Because here's, here's my availability, so where would you, you put that? You know, we, we see a few pockets too of resident, or commercial along highway. You know, so as we move forward in the future land use map in a few months, we may want to consider making highway, street a corridor for us such as a, you know, a neighborhood corridor, neighborhood business or mixed use is what we like to call as well, corridor. Such kind of as like the downtown area where you maybe have commercial on the first floor, but then residential above. But again, that's at the planning commission's discretion for that. This also helps you too, Matt, kind of tie in, so if we have any future ideas of, let's turn this big vacant lot into something else, you can see what's already around there and then that will get into some land use planning as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Other questions on our map before we move on? So as we did with our public engagement events, I have the boards here with us, what we tried to do last month, obviously I did not have the boards, so this will be a little bit easier for us all. I'll give you some post-its here and then I want to work through the first one of our downtown area, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And then also using the map in front of you too to kind of help you guide that decision. We'll obviously take all the public input we get and kind of digest it down as we move forward. But as a planning commission, you're the driving factor on this, it's in your, your wheelhouse, this whole project in essence. So you guys are the representation of the village and then from there it goes to obviously village council, but you guys are the, the ones who get to spearhead it, so.
Kyle, would you like us to come up there and?
I'm happy to hand them out and then we can discuss that way, again, there's five of you, it's not a big group thing. I know we're streaming because we have a quorum, so whatever you'd like to do, if you'd like to, you know, come up here, I can move it, I know Christian's asked me to keep it over here, so it can be on Zoom as well. I, I defer to you guys and village staff on the best layout for recording methods.
Okay, why don't, why don't you explain to us what you would like us to do?
So at this point, what I'd like to do is I'm gonna give you some sticky notes and then I want to talk about the strengths of the downtown area. And I'd like you to put your notes on there, just write your down, your observations. I know most of us have already done that in the past, but as a planning commission, I want you guys to have a dialogue as a planning commission in this regard. And then I'll stick them up here as well and then that kind of helps lead it through. The other activities that we've done with the three public open houses, we've seen a lot of strengths. The hit or miss on the weaknesses and then opportunities and more, so everyone we've discussed, probably eighty percent or more was upbeat and cheerful about the direction of the master plan. I don't really think we had anyone that was a super brick, I'll say that, drag it down. So most of our residents and those who came were positive and encouraging and had some valuable insight to give us, so. So this too is a dialogue between you guys and, and us, so the notes are just so I can remember what we talk about as well, so this is more I'd like it to, because we are a smaller group, just to kind of a dialogue between the, you know, eight of us, so in essence here. So, you know, happy to have you put your thoughts down, but otherwise we can just round robin it too, so. And I'd like to talk about strengths first, so. I know I've joked in the past that like, you know, there's a nice bakery downtown now, so every time I want some pretzel bread, I can go down there on Wednesdays and they're pretty consistent, you know? There's a wonderful breakfast and lunch place that is always, you know, packed to the gills on special events, I mean, there's, there's some nice anchors to our downtown as well. Yeah. Yeah, but I still would like to have a dialogue with you guys too, I don't want to just read it now, so as you're writing, feel free to, you know, let me know what your thoughts are and.
I, Kyle, I think one of the biggest strengths that Vicksburg has as a village is all the family engagement. Partially due to all the events that have been putting on recently, but also some of the accessibility of everything that is downtown.
Yeah, I, I just think we're fortunate, we have quite a variety, you know, we actually have, still have a hardware store, which a lot of places don't. Got the bakery, we've got restaurants, we've got some clothing stores now. I think we're very fortunate, we still actually have a pharmacy too, so I think those are really good things for a small town.
Rick, I'll say this, I know if, personally for our family, like if I need something for the hardware, I want to go into town, I mean, I don't want to go to Home Depot or Lowe's. I know that's kind of, unfortunately, the way we got a trend at times because they have a limited space down there, you can't, you know, a big box store has, you know, twenty times the size, but you're right, it is nice that we have a, that service.
I think a lot of people don't know, and he probably doesn't advertise, he, he can order just about anything you need. Because I've, yeah, because I've done that lots of times and he'll, and he'll, and he'll meet, he'll meet and beat the prices too, I've ordered a lot of stuff during, I ordered the fencing around my house during. Pretty amazing what all he can get, that I don't think people realize.
I, I think one of the biggest assets that we have now is the updated streetscapes and how attractive it is and how walkable it is. I, I never understand the, there's never any parking comments. Because as long as you're willing to walk up to five hundred feet, you can park anywhere and get anywhere in the, the village of Vicksburg. So I think that is going to serve us well for the next fifteen to twenty years as it evolves.
Mr. Shankle, I'd like to say this for you, so I know when we did our events, there was unfortunately probably a sticker at every event regarding parking in downtown. Residents and those interacting with us really wouldn't expand on it, they just said it's a weakness. But I know having worked with you guys, having heard from village staff, I mean, you're right, it's not in concern, so I wish it'd expand more. I believe it's a perception of available. So I wish it'd expand more, I believe it's a perception of available parking in front of a store, but.
Yeah, I would venture to say that uh, the majority of that is that uh, if the parking spot's not right out front of where they want to walk into, there's no parking.
Yeah.
So if you're trying to go to Rise and Dine on a Sunday morning, there's no parking in Vicksburg. The entire village of Vicksburg. I I think one of the benefits as well as the small business grant opportunities, um, you know, you just don't really see that a whole lot, and so of the the other one that I wrote down was, you know, fiscally responsible, fiscally strong, you know? Building a new building, having grant opportunities for facade grants and uh, those kinds of things, that's a that is a business driver, that is an attractive feature for small business owners, so I think that's a major strength.
Another one for us too that talked about with a few residences, I mean, how many communities will actively go out to their business owners and property owners when they're installing new water mains to encourage them to hook up? You know, how many will actually take that, those man hours, lots of dozens of man hours, probably Mr. Mallory? Uh, you to actively go out there and seek their input, I mean, others may just send a letter and call it good, but I mean, our village staff goes out and actively engages with those owners to inform them of this, so. For a staff of five, he works like he's got a staff of twenty.
I I think this is um early on the strength end, but I think the strength is the DDA and Chamber. Um, is uh, we're seeing some, some synergy happening, which is really good. Um, you know, the Chamber is kind of the event portion of that, and the DDA is the, we're gonna make it look nice for you, if partial of that. So I think we've got some, some good things happening, and uh, can't wait for a February event, I think that's gonna be awesome.
Uh, tons of help from you to to piggyback that for sure, that is a huge strength right now currently that we've just seen happen. Starting to develop in the last six months, I would think, or less, since the change was made.
I I would also say um, business growth and development is contagious. Uh, when you see other business owners invest in their businesses, that will rub off on others. You know, Rise and Dine, Jasper's, um, the Hideaway. You know, we're seeing Main Street host comedy, comedy nights. This, it I, it's kind of a, when you look at your neighbor, it's like, what are you doing to keep up with them? And that's, that's good uh, activity, that's good energy.
Anything else for strengths?
I'm I'm used, I'm I'm used to using one of these for these types of sessions, so. It's my stream of consciousness, I gotta, gotta let it go.
All right, okay. Made sure to, Mr. Schenkel, when I was picking up supplies last week, um, to bring extra pads to, just in, just in case, so. The next one, I know, because I want to keep everyone kind of conscious of their time too, tonight, um, weaknesses, and what I mean by this, I I we try to steer all those who were in attendance, um, and we had probably sixty, sixty to seventy, I think, residents in total, um, including DDA, PC members, trustee members. Um, attend as well those three engagements, um, but our discussions with them is, you know, I don't want to we tried to discourage the, you know, there's a pothole on main, you know, that I always hit with my car. That's kind of weakness, we wanted to hear, we want to hear more of, you know, um, things that we could tangibly correct that would be a benefit to the village when we think of weaknesses. You know, one was that there's a limited commercial availability of space downtown. I mean, that was a weakness that we had. Another, talking some business owners and residents, um, the financial investment would take just to get into downtown to get up and running, um, they don't know where to go for um, financial assistance on that. You know, do you have to go and get a bank loan, are there other programs out there to help you revitalize the building? So those were some of the weaknesses we heard about. At least for the downtown area, so.
It's uh, it's kind of come up with a lot of weaknesses, I think, being everybody at the state of Vicksburg. Uh, but as somebody who's tried, has had employees move from downtown into Vicksburg, I would say housing is, I'm not sure if it's a weakness, but I think it's something we're short of. Uh, especially on the rental side, maybe the uh, the temporary housing that people are getting situated um before buying homes, there are some homes available right now on Zillow, there is nothing uh, for rent currently. I try to stay up on that pretty close, uh, there's always people that need housing um, around me. So I would say that's something we should try to find somewhere around for.
Yeah, my my comment was kind of on the same as um, I think we've done a really good job developing the retail, which is that first floor component. This, the natural second component is the above retail housing. Um, and uh, I think uh, if you're gonna have businesses downtown, especially retail and and food, it 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 needs that walkable, um, people that can walk to those businesses to really thrive, and so I think that's kind of that next step is to look at what's above the retail and make it a place where people can live and and really develop their own.
And I'll say this to Mr. Schenkel and Zach too, on your comment, um, what we've seen other communities is residents and business owners, property owners, um, lack, and that's not their, their fault of its own, but the knowledge of how do you convert your upstairs to a res- you know, residential dwelling? What do you need to do? Do you need an architect? Do you need a contractor, a builder to go in and certify the building? You know, what are the processes to do that? So for some homeowners or property owners, that's daunting, they don't want to do that. Because they hear you gotta go talk to forty different people, and they're just like, nope, I'm out, I don't, I can't do that, that's above my capacity, I'm just gonna leave it vacant. Um, so there's an educational component as well, I believe, to the weakness of the downtown to be able to convert that, Mr. Schenkel, into those upstairs residences. You know, and how do you move forward with that, um, what else do you need, so? And that's no slight on village, that's no slight on anyone here, it's just, that's what I've, I've started to kind of perceive from our interactions with the public.
Yeah, this next one is um, a little sensitive, uh, but I I do think that um, we've we're, we're lacking in fine dining options. And um, that, trust me, I'm the first person to order a pizza from Jasper's on the weekends. We take advantage of the Main Street specials and, you know, I love making new friends at the Hideaway. But um, you know, having, having a nicer meal is not something that you can find in Vicksburg. And therefore, those dollars are leaving Vicksburg.
I know I'm talking with a few residents and owners, um, we had a good turnout, our second engagement event from downtown business owners as well. I know a few talked to me about staffing's an issue, available space is there too. Um, I think one business owner mentioned to me that he'd love to do dinners, but there's no staffing for it. Um, so that's another, you know, that's a weakness that we have, and it's not, again, not the fault of the village, it's just, that's what it is, and it's across the board. Um, and then how do we look at competing against places like Portage, who you have a, like Pfizer is spending a billion, I don't know, another three hundred million in expansions on top of the four hundred million they've already done, I mean, they're, how do you, how do we as a small village compete with that? So, you know.
My last comment that I had just real quick is um, i- if we're being really honest with ourselves, I think there's just a couple um, properties that are a little bit of an eyesore as you enter and exit, and um, I think it's Pember Newman that's talked about blight, and I don't, I don't know if we're at that point, but I think it's uh, something to be aware of is, you know, how how does your municipality look when a new person drives in or leaves that space? And um, I think there's uh, some area, some opportunity there for us to uh, target that a little bit more.
Well, then let me jump to opportunity, if you guys want to keep talking about that, I'll pick up the weaknesses ones, but if uh, I'd like to jump to opportunities. Uh, for opportunities, one thing I would like to um, percolate with a planning commission, um, as we move forward, looking at um, you know, we know retail wants to come in, they want more space. Um, something to consider over the next few months, especially when we get to like the future land use plan, is should we extend that commercial corridor down main south? You know, what would that look like? Um, you know, do we, capacity for that, would that offer more flexibility? And in that regard, um, it look at being a mixed use district. So you could have commercial again on the first floor, residential above, maybe it's small scale commercial next to residential, but possibly expanding that corridor south as well. I know some residents who maybe live in that area might not want that, but that is a, you know, to help kind of envision over the next ten years, how do we solely incrementally look at that.
Hey Jim, you, you know if uh, if it's ever been discussed to move the fire department too, kind of where it's at?
I I don't know, I just think it's kind of prime spot for where it's at, you know? Just doesn't, look at it, okay, nevermind, Jim.
Now, there's, there was conver- I mean, it, this came up because of a rumor in the village. And we um, as being the council, took uh, a unanimous vote on a resolution that that would not occur prior to, and by memory, President Frisbee, twenty seven, twenty eight or twenty nine, I forget the calendar year, but it was quite a number of years out because we're a partner with five other entities, and um, that would would take a lot of logistics to ensure that they had a a spot to be. And we wanted to assure them that there was no movement on our part um, until that calendar year, like I said, I think it, I think it's at least twenty seven, and I won't be shocked if it was twenty eight or twenty nine. Yeah, and it's just.
Our anticipation is that their authority comes up with a plan, some strategy and budget to expand their coverage. And where that might be, they need to figure that out. So be it, will they find out the property that suits them better? And and that's, that's the role that we're all trying to get to, is get them a current forward, how much it takes to. But you're absolutely right. But we need fire service too. We're looking to that for the night, for the next time for this.
Rick, if it helps, I know, um, I talked to a few residents, um, an opportunity for the downtown for us, and kind of ties into a thread as well, is we'd like to see maybe full-time fire personnel there. Um, we appreciate all of our on-call, who are there in their response time. Um, but it did seem to be positive reception to exploring in this, you know, a ten-year plan, this is not like two weeks from now, having full-time staff there, like the police department is, you know, looking at some, moving, my greeting towards that. You know, even if that is just two staff, you know, full-time there, but so. But there has been some positive feedback on that as well, as you know, residents have considered that too, and whatever's the best for the village, so. So that kind of keep these two brave opportunities and threats, I mean, opportunities, got a lot of positive feedback from residents on that engagements. Threats was always kind of small thrust being, you know, again, Pfizer's expanding, Stryker's always expanding. You know, what does that do? That means people are moving to those areas instead of the village. Um, or are they moving to the village because they're gonna work now in Portage, so are we gonna become a bedroom community? So opportunities and threats. Their feedback from opportunities or threats, Mr. Schenkel, I see your list going over there.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's easy to take all of your weaknesses and turn them into opportunities. Um, you know, for me, it was turning around the downtown hu- housing stock. Um, I know this isn't in the plans already, but to resurface the Washington Street parking lot. Uh, I did write down move the fire department. Um, I I think Clark Park is a, is a amenity and an asset that's probably pretty underutilized. So having some events, some music. Member Bishop, if you can uh, steer your cohort in that direction.
That has come up in conversation, not necessarily that it's underutilized, but that it could draw more, not only downtown attention, but more different people from different places.
Yeah, you know, what's interesting is when I, when I attend the car show, you walk all over downtown, clear all the way down to the ice cream shop and to Main Street. You walk right over that bridge and pass Clark Park, and there's nothing happening there, it's this huge green space with nothing going on. Uh, that is a missed opportunity, uh, in um, finding a way to, to utilize that would be uh, great.
Yeah, to add to that, that's the biggest thing with my opportunity would be to uh, keep, make sure the mill is continuing, that we keep moving forward and get the mill. You know, it just seems like it just keeps getting put off another year, another year, I mean, that's gonna be such a vital thing to the village, once it's up and running, I think, to tie it all together, but. I don't know, it just seems like it's losing a lot of steam lately, I hate to see that.
Our um, our team will work further with uh, village staff too, and probably Mr. Frisbee, but um, the mill has been a project that we've noted within the master plan, um, well, we're again, with village staff, I kind of how we introduce that, but that is a property and project itself, we would, we do want to include in our master plan because it is.
Yeah, that's just, yeah, that's an opportunity that we could really pull from what they bring in for us to be able to pull off of, you know? Like I said, if if they do what they do, we need hotels and stuff, that'd be great. You know, yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, I'd, kind of along those lines is um, one of the byproducts that comes, I think, from the mill is defining our rental housing parameters, um, having language and um, restrictions is too strong of a word, but just um, a protocol to to follow for rental housing. Don't know if we, we have something like that right now, we have a rental housing. Okay. Last thing I had, uh, Kyle, was um, kind of promotion of wellness amenities. Um, I think the the bike event that we have is a popular one, but that trailhead is such a major asset that um, uh, I think that's kind of a continuation of um, the amenities that stem from downtown is the health and wellness component of of Vicksburg.
So in that case, man, what we'd um, potentially look at too as an opportunity is um, I know we all love signs everywhere, but creating some wayfinding signage that would link you to that trail system that that goes from there, um, whether or not they're strategically placed downtown, even if they're little wayfinding markers that say, you know, starting here to the, you know, the, you know, northern portion of the Vicksburg Trail is this many miles from here, once we connect with Portage, it's gonna be this many miles. You know, lead that way, so then we do have those markers. So that's an opportunity for us as well, so.
Yeah, I, I know that there's a, between a trail system and then the bike lanes, you can get from my neighborhood all the way to the trailhead uh, on those systems, and so having some signage, um, I'm a little leery of signage, but um, we're inundated with that information already, but if it's creative and it's engaging, I think that's a fun way to, again, provide the chamber with some opportunities to have some wellness events.
Moving on to our next one, unless there's anything else for the downtown. The keep facility that we did or engagement was aspects similar to kind of strengths and weaknesses uh, for the downtown, but as a village as a whole that we asked residents for input on. Um, so in this case, you know, what are aspects you like as a village as a whole you'd like to keep? We have another board, you know, that I'll get to with this fix and then expire, but just as keep. For me, it's the dedicated, you know, village staff we have that put in all the hours. The nice new Main Street as well, the, you know, it seems to be a direction from council as well to do um, landscape enhancements and even just downtown street enhancements to get those residents and other interested parties um, engaged downtown. So that's what I'm asking for when we talk about keep with you guys. You know, what are aspects, hey, ten years from now, we wanna see this still going strong. Whether that be Mr. Schenkel, like a good partnership with the chamber, the DDA, you know, members, things along that nature. Verizon Design to sell a double-layer, you know, cinnamon roll would be a great, uh, you know, that'd be an expire thing.
Doctor's office right next door, check cholesterol.
Yeah, another thing too, um, we looked at with keep, we heard from residents is we have an engaged planning commission, we have an engaged council. You know, we have members who are turning up to events who are there. I know in our families come to different events, I see members of council, I see village staff out there, you know, making it run super, I mean, just well. We see members from the PC and other boards as well. So we have community engagement, not only on our boards, but it's, it is a community style. So that's something I know for me, I'd like to see keep, you know, capped with it as well.
Uh, add all of those events, Sanders and Eric, all those guys who are walking around, engaging with citizens. I mean, I guess, maybe, maybe that's not part of their, their goal of the evening, but I know every time I've been downtown, uh, I've been able to chat with them for a few minutes. I think that sends a very good message to the youth that are at those public events as well as the adults. As, I mean, as far as, obviously, we don't have a very crime-filled village and that's great. But I think, you know, continuing that, keeping people at a place where they're helping people, where they're enjoying themselves as well is something we should keep doing, if not, you know, put some more focus on as events are gonna continue to get bigger and happen.
We, and uh, great village staff who financially keep this village, you know, on track compared to what it was years ago. I mean, that's something else that, you know, we're not seeing, at least in the news, that we're privy to going out there, having to get loans and bonds for everything. I mean, we have a good helm, you know, on our ship moving forward of our financial abilities here too. So that's, I know a lot of residents don't care, they just wanna be able to, you know, they pay their taxes, they just wanna know that their water's gonna turn on when they, you know, turn the sink on and uh, you just, that's what they care about, so. Any notes for, for keep? I know we've kind of already gone through it, but uh, anything you'd like to add for the keep?
No, Mr. Schenkel, I tried to wrap in the threats or the opportunities and threats in the kind of one, because again, I wanna be cautious of you guys' time tonight and moving forward. Well, I, you know, I, I would just say that as we go through this exercise, the threats is always one of the areas of a SWAT that's probably one of the more important areas. I think it's easy to talk about strengths and opportunities and some weaknesses are certainly the things that are inside of your control, but the threats are the things that if you're not aware of them, we're not thinking about them, there's no way for us to have an impact because by and large, those are the things that are outside of our control, so um.
Can I tie your comment in then to the fix board? Can I?
Do it. I like a good segue.
So, so this for fix, again, when we engage with the residents, we weren't asking for the, you know, officer so-and-so is Amini or anything like that. We wanted big-picture items that, you know, hey, um, I know it's a little bit outside of the wheelhouse for the village itself, but one item that we heard was, you know, we have li- very limited industrial land that we can expand into anymore. And we didn't get into the nitty-gritty with them of, you know, we're limited on size too, but that was one thing that they mentioned about fixes. You know, we don't have the ability to expand like other communities do. So how do we entice other things? How do we readapt or reuse as well, so? And then Matt, I think that kind of ties into a little bit as well for fix of your comment about Mr. Newman and the potential blighted properties. How do we, you know, address blight? Um, how do we address housing? The county's got a big initiative going on too for housing. Portage is doing a big um, housing study or housing program as well right now, so. Discussions on fix? There doesn't seem to be a, uh, some of them that we work with, a, a clear direction, which also doesn't, doesn't help.
Sure.
You know, Vicksburg, we're very fortunate that we have the resources we do. Other communities are, you know, maybe similar population, but are very limited. They're spread out over thirty-six square miles, you know, it's, county maintains their roads. Um, they're limited on potential in that regard. So for us in the village, having our own DPW is wonderful, you know, we can maintain that. Having a great partnership with other county agencies is wonderful. Some I work with, over the years, county has been like the frontrunner. So then as it trickles down to the townships, the townships feel like they've been left out. So there's already a negative image, so they don't really wanna work with county moving forwards. So, those are some of the, um, it's how the background has been around over the five or ten years, so.
I think just the, what I've heard is, is um, this is probably more of an opportunity than a fix, but to grow the downtown commercial zoning area and the properties it has. Fire Department conversation was an interesting conversation.
I can't write in, talk at the same time, so pardon me. Anything else for fix? We heard from some residents talking about, um, you know, availability of bike lanes. There's no bike lanes on that. We note that there are sidewalks, but unfortunately, some are in disrepair, so whose responsibility is that to maintain? Is it the villages? If it's a public sidewalk, is it the residents? So those are some non-motorized um, discussions we've had with interested parties as well. Some are interested in being able to walk and get from maybe the, the Twenty-Second Street neighborhood and there's a trail and sidewalks and whatnot, so. But how do we expand that to include bike lanes or other means of transportation that don't rely on automobile, so? So I'd look at you guys here in a few months as we talk about the transportation plan from the master plan, so. And that's also why too, having these existing land uses in front of you will be critical as we move forward into other segments as well. See how do we tie these in, especially when we look at um, ten years from now? How do we connect the residential on Twenty-Second to the downtown? How do we connect, you know, potential activities at the mill site in five or ten years to downtown? What's that look like? You don't wanna monorail? Um, and another thing we looked at too, that's, I guess, a fix for industrial, um, we're very land-limited. So it's gonna be, again, critical to the planning commission if we get a rezoning request in too of, you know, what are residents want, which is also why the master plan's very important, you know, it'll be your guiding policy document. But do we allocate, you know, the last twenty acres in the village to industrial? Do we allocate it to residential? So that'll be something to um, maybe after everyone here on the boards, no longer on the board, that I have to consider, but those are real-world problems that we'll have to address in the next five to ten years, if not sooner, so. Anything else for, for fix? We didn't really find a lot of comments per se from residents on that that were substantial. I mean, people voiced opinions, but they kind of all coalesced to the, you know, four or five main topics, so. All right. Yeah, two, two more boards and then we'll call it. No, that's why this will go fast. I know Mr. Holmes has indicated to me a few times he's been here too, um, you know, something he'd like to see fixed or even tie into it expire to the Sunset Lake. He'd like to see more development or more activity regarding Sunset Lake. As a resource of the village or as a amenity of the village, you'd like to see that come more to the forefront, so. I think I mentioned a, a few residents as well, um, I'd like to expire us too in five or ten years. Have a um, a joint police department and fire department, a public safety. You know, maybe a centralized location or even um, this is really far out there, you know, probably fifteen, twenty years, but a second fire station on the other side of the tracks, so we can service the northern portion of the village. Should we get one of those, you know, three-mile-long trains coming through, so?
I think just having been in this capacity in another municipality of this size, becoming a destination is something that's um, I, it's a little buzzy, but it's, it's, there's some truth to it. You know, when, when the perception is, is you're kind of further away than you think you are, um, having those key components to draw people to Vicksburg is, is important. So kind of continuing to position ourselves as that destination, I don't think you'll ever be there, it's probably more of a, a vision versus um, an actual accomplishable goal, but that will evolve over time.
Well, Matt, that's why we have the aspire board up here too, so. You know, but on your destination though, I mean, you have residents from the county who come to visit local businesses. I mean, I have family who come out of Portage just to come down and visit local businesses because they have been such a key aspect of the community and they continue to be. I mean, I know like distant whistle, people come from all over, you know, to visit. Rise and die has people all, from all over come to visit, you know, probably next barber shop and others as well. I mean, we have many, many, many destination spots.
I think a lot of that is due almost, I don't like to, one, the way they service their, their clients, but the exposure of the food truck rallies and the events downtown. Other than that, there's not a lot of ways to figure out those businesses are down there, other than people coming from out of town to our events, our car shows, the food truck rallies. Seeing them, going back to where they're from and telling their group of friends or people. Yes, yes.
A big thing we heard too from residents, I think at our second and third engagement events, was having activity for school-aged chi- kids in the afternoons, so it's just that, they're not going back to home. I think Mackenzie's, they'll do a afternoon snack pack for students, you know, others, so I think that helps spark some ideas. So residents wanna see more businesses that are able to in the afternoons tailored to school-aged children. Who can help and then that will also help drive activities as well. And us personally, when I heard, I mean, our daughter too little and too young to go walk to Mackenzie's from herself from elementary school, but in a few years, if they still do the snack packs, I mean, that'd be great for her to be able to go down there and pick up that when she's able to walk farther, but, so. So little things like that, Matt, I think you're right. We, you know, we have little destinations, you know, we just need to build on that, so. Anything for the first buyer?
I'll mention this um, tongue-in-cheek a little bit. I, I don't claim to be the expert on it, but I do think that there are some real benefits to becoming a city versus being a village. So I think that, that's something that is an opportunity for our council leadership, our staff leadership to at least uh, look into and um, identify paths to uh, that, uh, becoming that municipality. Yeah, that's another conversation for another time.
The, the main area would be we'd have to take on the assessing roles in the elections.
There are, there are four key areas, as Jim said, those are two of the key areas, we don't, we don't have. Well, there's a lot of villages around that are twice our population, you know, in the state of Michigan.
I think.
Choosing the government.
Yeah, I think it should also be noted that um, I think it was around two thousand seven and eight, so well before any of us, I believe, were involved. Uh, but the village made a four-twenty-five agreement with one of the townships that if they ever took that action, they'd forfeit that area of four-twenty-five, which would have considerable financial impact to the village, so it'd have to be real, real thought out as part of that process, and really that's why it's not on our, our table at this time, as we're honoring that agreement that was made.
The last engagement board we had um, was the housing style choices. This wasn't a depiction of the exact housing type, but to give those who were able to attend um, an idea. We have, you know, attached kind of condo-style homes. Senior apartments or multi-level apartments, it's not to be just for seniors, large lots, single-family homes on the blue. You know, single-family homes, not tiny homes, but smaller lots, smaller home footprints. Smaller homes with a centralized kind of courtyard or common area as well, duplexes, and then um, single-family homes with sidewalks, streetlights.
Duplexes and then, um, single-family homes with sidewalks, street lighting and so forth along that nature. So what we did with this engagement event was, um, I got some stickers here too, and this is something after maybe the meeting. You guys can put them up there, but we asked for a visual preference. So if new housing were to go into the village, is there a choice style that the village should explore more of on that? Really, it kind of seemed to be all across the board. Our top one here, the attached kind of condos, didn't really receive any residents who were happy with multifamily housing, but they didn't want in their backyard, that's a common, common theme, so they want this, but they don't want it. So it's, you know, it's, it's, you can't get both. The single-family large lots were kind of a hit or miss for us that we got. I think that again too is the dynamic of our village, we don't have a lot of land left for those style. It's just not also economical for any kind of developer on that. We received some positive feedback on the smaller homes, smaller lots. A lot of our, I'll say forties and up like the idea of a smaller home footprint. They can still be in the village, but it accessed a central courtyard, garden area that they could interact with their neighbors. It's not a senior complex, but it acts like it, but you're still having your own home, but you're able to engage with others in that little community. Similar to Centennial along twenty-second street when there's a big park out there that they have. Something similar to that, only in a very smaller scale, common areas. Duplex was a hit or miss, I think most residents who stuck a sticker here liked that idea because you can get two or three units on a single parcel as compared to others. Received some feedback about this, I think most residents kind of attributed this last style with sidewalks, single-family homes to Allen Edwin developments. And as soon as we gave that example, it was like, oh, it's like the Allen Edwin, maybe off of Centennial, um, off of twenty-second street, Prairies, Trillium. They just bad taste in their mouth and they left. They, so I think that might have been a connotation with the developer itself and not so much this housing style, so. Which is unfortunate because eventually they, they liked the idea of sidewalks, street lighting, single-family homes. You're close to neighbors, but you still have some room, but as soon as they heard of Allen Edwin or a certain developer, they just, nope. So, so that's the last board I have for you guys. Afterwards, please feel free to put some stickers on there unless you'd like to just very briefly talk about, you know, is there a preference as a planning commi-, you know, as a member of the planning commission, you're in favor of, so. And again too, this is where, this also helps tie into our existing land use map. Might be kind of hard to see, but there's not very many parcels right now that have, you know, multifamily. There's one off of the Boulevard and V Avenue, what we considered multifamily there. Uh, Sunset Lake Apartments as well. I'm drawing a blank, but off of Highway Street down there, is it Saw Mill? Saw Mill, alright, there. Um, there's one there. So I think that's really kind of it for multifamily housing. Large lot would again be those on your map here, the, um, just regu- residential category. And then a mix between probably our visual preference here with a smaller home, smaller lots. And the bottom left down here would be your neighborhood residential as well, just for kind of some comparison. Obviously, these are different years built than what we have currently in the village, but to give you an idea of the neighborhood feel and our styles, so.
You know, this, obviously, everybody has their own idea at this table, what kind of housing style we like. I do wanna mention from a, a busy, younger man than most of the gentlemen in this room, that, uh, no offense to any of you, I tried to say that in soft.
Well, how did you come walking my place, though?
The, uh, you know, I've, my idea of housing has changed. The first house I bought in Vicksburg was a large lot off thirty-sixth street. Uh, I thought it was exactly what I wanted, uh, turned out to not necessarily be the case. And I, as a younger, very busy guy who also wants to stay very involved with the community, close to the village, close to all the amenities that it has, and then it will continue to grow. I have said to dozens of people that I've come across around this village that condos would be excellent for people in exactly my position to be able to have, um, a nice place to live. But it's close to all the amenities, uh, without the, you know, without having to necessarily take care of a big yard or all of those things. And that's just my two cents.
I, I was really hoping you'd say bungalow, kind of sway the odds that a forty to fifty old, old guy stuff.
I do, I do like the idea of a, uh, of a shared neighborhood courtyard type thing, I think that's very European almost, uh, and I, I think that's.
We are seeing traction in other communities, um, developers are starting to kind of quietly tease out bungalow courts. But we've asked them to come back and say, alright, if you wanna do a bungalow court, something similar to this, that's great. But put eight or nine homes on a single parcel, don't spread out this tiny home on eight parcels. Cause now you're, we don't wanna say you're wasting the land, but now you're not using the land to its highest and best potential as well, so.
I was shocked, it was pretty cool actually. They had a lot of house, nice and beautiful houses, they all shared the same sidewalks.
Is it to the east side as you're going there?
It's once you go through the light.
Those paths on the other side.
Couple restaurants, it's gonna be on the south side, just got a little bit of a sign that says something. Yeah, maybe it's like, you drive back and it's actually back behind you. Pretty impressive, it was really neat.
No.
Cheap, but actually they had a lot of homes, kind of very small buildings, like setting, small area.
How many, how many votes did we get on that?
The bungalow?
Yeah, on any of them, you want us to put our sticker on which, the ones.
But you, um, you can put up, what do you got here, seven board, you, up to seven stickers, so. What we've had residents do is if they like this, put a sticker, if you don't like it, don't put anything. So that's how we engage with them on that. I would like to add though, for the four and a half of you who are on the commission, that housing obviously is a national concern right now, it is a county concern, it, it will become a village concern as well. So this is something we should give due consideration to as we develop our master plan of what we want the last little bit of available land in the village to look like. I mean, if, do you want bungalow styles, do you want condos, do you want large lots? I mean, there's more than just the planning commission consider, but as the direction and as the guidance goes in this plan, what do you guys envision in five to ten years that to look like? So that is something that, like, I'm glad you brought that up too. We need to consider, and again, that it's helpful for the existing land use map to know what will tie in to that as well. Will a bungalow court tie into current trends? Do we need to look at creating a, you know, another P U D where we can have some commercial up front, but residential on the back? So that'll be food for thought as we continue to move forward, but housing is something that we wanna, um, be concerned with.
Kyle, I don't mean to interrupt, when you get a chance. So you're aware, or the, the board's aware, there's quite a, a bit of energy at the county level on housing. And, um, the numbers are staggering with how short the county is in housing when you project out over the next decade. So, uh, with, um, attempting to attract industrial or manufacturing, uh, large entities that, that equal jobs as with the abundance of higher education graduates that we have, um, housing is almost near the top priority. Um, into what Mr. Bishop talked about varying, uh, demographics of housing. But it's going to be here in the next few years, probably the top lead energy at a, at almost southwest Michigan. Um, and, and it's everywhere really, but for art to impact us, it's gonna be quite a bit.
A week or two ago, um, Pavilion Township had a, I think, article on, uh, maybe M Live or even, uh, News Three, but they just, uh, approved or are breaking ground like on a three hundred unit, um, housing complex as well, and that's big news for them. Oshimo Township has a few projects going through as well, Kemal Zoo Township, um, not so much. City Kemal Zoo's always got stuff in flux, so like Jim mentioned, it is a, it's a county trend out there.
Kyle, what kind of lead measures do you guys look at for developing housing stock? You know, I, I would have to imagine that housing stock matches the, um, wh- what's being attrac- what's being attracted to that area? And so kind of to your point, if, if it's a really trendy area, eh, you're gonna attract more young professionals that are most likely single, which, you know, the condo with the garage thing might be more attractive. But, you know, when I think of Vicksburg more historically, I would say single-family housing is probably more the ticket. I, I don't know if I have a good feel for an opinion on the housing stock or what it would be, what, what should be here? But I would say if I were to make an opinion or base an opinion on is be, what are those lead measures that tell you, you know, apartments over single-family or condos over apartments or something like that?
I don't have it in front of us, um, we haven't completed the analysis yet, Mr. Schenkel, um, but it is part of our scope for the master plan to provide like a housing analysis as well. Um, so I have another colleague, I'll work with that on, you know, he's, um, their family is expecting a newborn in the next couple of weeks. So I'm hoping come February, I can work with him and tie that down and then maybe in March, we'll have some analysis back for you. Uh, but that is a, um, analysis point that has been requested from the master plan update process. Also on that too, uh, even though it's not your packet, probably maybe next month, um, we've started to map out the sewer and water as well availability. So that'll kind of help tie into, to where potential development can go, um, as well. So we'll provide that, um, for your information as well as we look at, you know, future trends. Like Jim said, it's a, it's a big issue in the county, so I think we need to be open and receptive to it. But then as a land use planner, um, when we go forward with, you know, where can we allocate that in the village? We also need to be concerned with sticking new housing next to an industrial site, for example. So we're gonna, um, working with village staff, we're gonna probably have a workshop one of these night, one of our meeting nights to just talk about the future land use. And we'll go over those aspects as well.
Jim, I'm curious if you saw any data or metrics on the demographics of who the housing stock is gonna be? Who, what demographics are gonna be underserved from, uh, housing, uh, stock?
I might blow the zoning category, but I think it's R two where it's, uh, multi like apartments, condos, um, entry level housing.
Okay.
What would be my, uh, appropriate? Entry, you know, their first home time, home buyers, uh, and that is a, is a level, right? And this goes both, I was at a M M L conferences, some Michigan municipal league conference in Holland, Michigan this summer. It was, uh, presented there, uh, at a more statewide level. And then, uh, multiple meetings I've been at, uh, with the county on the countywide looking at, available housing and, and how the county didn't even have enough apartment rentable spaces, uh, for, for our workforce. Affordable housing, I think.
We'll probably in our report, Matt, um, and even the master plan, might try to avoid, um, this is no slide on Jim, but, uh, kind of the new trendy term is attainable housing instead of affordable. Cause for everyone in this room, affordable is gonna have different meanings, so, um, we're seeing a shift more towards describing it as attainable housing, so.
It's probably one of those age differences Zach was speaking of earlier.
Yeah. So when you see that, Mr. Schenkel, moving forward, um, just it, it's similar to affordable housing, but, um, we're seeing more of a trend across the state as it being reclassified to attainable housing. I will share this, I know some of the residents we talked with, like I said, they, they want senior housing. They just don't know where to put it in the village and they don't want in their backyard, so they're all for it, they just, it's, it's like they want it way out, you know, off of, you know, is it McDonald Way, somewhere out there, all that land, stick it out there, so. So that's what I have, I know it's, um, been a good hour with you guys on this, um, so that's what our engagement events were. Afterwards, you know, please put some stickers up here too, as you guys are the driving factor of this process entirely. We're collecting citizen input, which will be very beneficial and we'll present that next, I don't remember my timeline with Jim, but next month or in March, um, fully of what that looks like too, so.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question is just kind of from this point going forward, what does the rest of the engagement look like, Jim? Timeline and then what are our action steps that we take from this?
Um, first off on engagement next week, I believe it's Tuesday and Wednesday.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday. Kyle and I or other, uh, staff will be at local establishments during the breakfast and lunch hours for different ones to engage people coming in to see if they want to participate in filling out surveys. So we can just capture more data and input, uh, and then, um, through the utility billing, we, um, sent out, uh, the scan code to, to continue to try to solicit as much input as we could through, through this electronic survey. And then as Kyle said, there'll, there'll be a period here where it's working with staff more to make sure this data and information's correct. The ultimate timeline of adoption isn't until, uh, like September. So, um, I envisioned this spring at the earliest, all dependent upon, um, availability and what's on the schedule would be the next time we come formally in front of a, a pl- planning commission meeting. But there will be at least one more possi- and I believe two more times where to the planning commission giving updates before the planning commission takes a vote on, on the draft plan. I just can't remember the months.
Our initial timeline, I'm hoping to get you, the planning commission, a draft to discuss in April. And then in May, we're looking to have planning commission make a recommendation to council to send out for the required sixty-three day public comment period at that point. Um, so then that's the state requirement, so if that gets adopted or approved through council in May, um, June, July, and then will have to be public comment periods, there'll be no action taken, it'll just be out for citizens, other municipalities to comment on. And then any feedback we get from that, we'll bring it back hopefully to planning commission in August. If there's no changes, then that will be a recommendation to council to approve the master plan. Um, either their second meeting in August or first meeting in September is our timeline, so. Subject to change, anything else that might come up, that's our tentative timeline right now, so. Think I worked with Jim, there'll be activities or, um, engagement events in a sense with the planning commission, um, now through May. Every, every month, we're trying to chip away at some stuff, so.
No, after five o'clock meetings where comments may be a little interesting.
Nope, we did the, the three engagement events after five, um, so it had probably a total of sixty-ish people show up. Um, very fortunate to have at least ten or more from boards and commissions and council show up, but. Received public engagement, but, uh, our hope now is by taking it to the, um, local businesses during the daytime breakfast and lunch. We'll be able to solicit more input from that. I know a few residents indicated to us at one of our engagement events that, you know, there, especially being night now at five o'clock, there doesn't seem to be any drive to wanna drive at night. However, in the morning, they're more willing to come out, residents are, so.
Okay, anything else, Kyle?
I don't believe so, um. We'll work with you guys next month on some other um aspects of the plan, like I said, in March, I believe, and I'll have to work with Jim on our schedule. Or hopefully talk about our future land use plan, that'll just be more of a work session like this with you guys. Um, in front, and then again, April will be the draft document before you, so. And we'll go through that and change anything there, and then again, come back in May hopefully for recommendation to council, so. And again, I'd like you to, I mean, I'll, I'll keep sending these existing land use maps to, to Jim when we need to, but that will be a good basis as we move forward with um. Kind of engagements um as well, especially with uh goals and objectives, I think we have that planned for next month or maybe in March as well, after we get our public comment back. Um, that's a component of the master plan, so we'll go through it, uh exercise there of, you know, what the goal is and then how do we achieve that? We may draft some items initially first for planning commission that asks for your input, or we may do a, just another work session with you guys and say. What are the goals and then go through it that way, so probably a bit of those, but.
Thank you, Kyle. Alright, we'll move on to member comments, any comments from this uh commission? Alright.
I would take a moment to uh thank you all for serving and doing what you do. Specifically the D D A and then the planning commission coming up with the uh building improvement program, and that was a huge success. I was very honored to uh, with Jim to give them the money, so, I mean, it all started right here with, with this board in front of us, so. I know everything's done behind the scenes, but I, I appreciate and the staff appreciates your, uh, what you've done.
I'm not sure if we have any, but we also have to go through citizen comments. Yeah, we did that at the beginning, there was nobody present. Oh, YouTube wasn't working, okay. Alright, we will open it up for citizen comments now.
YouTube has worked the entire meeting, uh, the links and the Zoom link worked. So if you do hear anything of that, okay.
Mr. Mucha, do you have any citizen comments? Okay. Any other member comments? Alright, the time is eight twenty-eight and I will adjourn this meeting, thank you everyone.
Recording stop.